Okay, good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock and we will be calling tonight's Temecula City Council meeting to order. We will start off with an invocation by Anthony Madrigal of the Eschatologist and then Terry Gilmore is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, council. Let us hear a message from the Father. My name is your power and your reward, for all of you have done for this city and its people. May you continue with such authority and care for your city, because the enemy would love nothing more than to destroy it. May you understand what it is at stake for your people that are, that they are well protected from the unjust that I see in other cities. They are yours to protect and to lead into encouragement whenever possible. For your sake, I hope you receive this message with love and encouragement. I know the stress that your city has undergone and the challenges that it faced, but with every challenge that is faced, there is an encouragement for you, the council, and therefore the people. May you wish to continue with the plans you have made and with a little advice, feel free to run them by me, your Father. Happy people make for a most pleasant city. This is all for now, and may you have a beautiful Christmas. Love, your Father.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
I'm here virtually, thank you.
Councilmember Calfis.
Here.
Mayor Schwenk.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start off tonight's meeting with our presentations. We have a Certificate of Recognition to Temecula Preparatory School Girls Volleyball CIF Champions. If you'd like to make your way down to the podium, we'd appreciate that. And, yeah. So Mayor Protem Stewart's going to come down with the certificates, and I'm going to read a little bit about Temecula Prep Patriots Girls Volleyball. You won the first CIF championship in your school history. You are CIF Southern Section Division Eight Champions. Your overall record was 27-5. You were 12-0 South Valley League champs. You're 5-0 in the playoffs. You only lost one set. Thirteen-game winning streak to complete the season. Congratulations. So I'll go ahead and read off the, we'll start with the athletes, and Mayor Protem Stewart will present you with your certificate. Sidney Gray. Sophia Masick. Kalia Mahia. And Naya Mahia. And Sophia Yoshi Saki. And this team is coached by the head coach Donald Reath. Assistant coach Andy Webster. And assistant coach Jackie Gray. All right, and we'd certainly love to hear a little bit of your stories, so maybe if the head coach and some of the athletes would like to tell us a little bit about your, your team and your season, we'd appreciate that. No pressure, though.
No, 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 no pressure at all, I guess. I will say we've had a remarkable year, obviously. It's a fantastic group of young women, definitely the best team we've ever had. I've coached there for, this is ending season number seventeen. And like I said, it's by far the best team we've ever had. It was something I've chased, they helped, they took it on as their mission as well. This is the first CIF championship, I think you said it, in school history. So we're remarkably proud that the girls volleyball team was able to bring that. So that's all for me.
That's fantastic.
Seniors, players, and...
Well, I know we want to get a photograph, so if there's no athletes that would wish to speak. Sean is back up there, so you can all scooch in and, and we can take a group photograph. Yeah, you can come into the middle of the podium, too. Yeah, there you go.
Open, open, close, close. Close.
And then don't go anywhere, because I think Stu's going to need a selfie. Congratulations to the Temecula Prep Patriots Girls Volleyball. All right, and our second Certificate of Recognition will go to the Temecula Pony All-Stars, the fourteen U Western Division Champions. If you'd like to make your way down to the podium. I like those unis. All right, so I'll go ahead again and I'll read off the, the athletes' names and the coaches, and then we can learn a little bit more about your team and the journey to Pony All-Stars. So the first athlete is Jaden Vergara. Ryder Servello. Joey Alvarez. Ethan Harriman. Blaine Sullivan. James Bravo. Ethan Fisher. John Mindartis. And Arthur Vandeleem. And Hayden Smith. The Temecula Youth Baseball Pony All-Stars fourteen U is coach, head coach Jeff Mindartis. Assistant coach Frank Bravo. And assistant coach Gene Harriman. And if maybe the head coach or anyone else would like to tell us a little bit about your team and the journey, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you, City of Temecula, for being so supportive for the league and just having a wonderful season. Great group of kids. I've been in the city for twenty-one years and been in baseball for ten of them, and this has been, been a really fun and just rewarding season. You know, we, we persevered, the first tournament, we, we stayed up in competition until eleven-thirty at night, and the tournament director was like, "The lights are going to turn off," and we kept battling through and battling through and won, won that division title at, at that point, and just persevered through, and a great group of kids, a great city, and a lot of fun. So thank you all for being so supportive.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here. All right. And if you could go ahead and scoot into the middle there, Sean, I would love to get All right, yeah. Congratulations, Temecula Youth Baseball Pony All-Stars fourteen U. Thank you all for being here. Thank you. All right. We are going to move, so we're going to do a little reorganization of the agenda tonight. We are going to move to item number fifteen. So we'll kind of let everybody filter out, but I'll go ahead and read. Item fifteen is on our business calendar. It's approved, "Twenty-twenty-three Annual Public Recognitions Pursuant to Policy at the Request of Subcommittee Members Alexander and Stewart." May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and provide a staff report, and as soon as all the students are out, we'll go ahead and shut that lobby door as well, so as to not interfere with the audio recording. So on January tenth, twenty-twenty-three, the City Council approved its citywide public recognitions policy. Pursuant to the policy, all requests for memorial, monument, facility naming, or related recognitions are considered annually each year by the Public Recognition Subcommittee prior to being submitted to the full City Council for consideration. All submissions must be processed through the publicly accessible portal, where requesters may submit their application, note the type of recognition they are seeking, and provide supplemental documentation in support of the criteria required for each of the awards. The twenty-twenty-three Public Recognition Subcommittee, consisting of Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Alexander, met on August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, to consider the following recognitions, and were supportive of all of the same. Number one, Ed Morrell, Twenty-twenty-three Community Leader Award of Distinction. Number two, Rosie Vanderhock, for the naming of the conference room in the Ronald H. Roberts Library. Number three, Roger Epperson, for the naming of the Stampede Parking Lot. Number four, Ronald Parks, naming of the Community Recreation Center. And number five, Wilder Hills, for the sign placement pursuant to a two thousand thirteen resolution adopted by City Council. In addition, the Subcommittee was supportive of placing a perpetual plaque outside of the Temecula Police Substation in Old Town Temecula to honor fallen public safety personnel, including Deputy Sheriff Edward M. Schrader. With the Council's approval, staff will complete all recognitions proposed in the upcoming year with the appropriate celebrations and notifications. As a reminder, today is just to go ahead and approve the overall slate. These recognitions will be handled by the appropriate department in the upcoming year, and all family and friends will be invited to those recognitions individually. So again, this is a slate approval. We do have some public comments on this particular item. Unless, Mr. Mayor, unless council has questions of staff of the staff report, I think I have about six or seven public comments.
Okay. Do any of my colleagues have any questions of staff? Okay, let's hear the public comments.
Okay. The first speaker is Terry Gilmore, to be followed by Kelly Avon.
Good evening.
Actually, being back here kind of feels like home. Good evening, Mayor Schwenk, City Council members, staff. My name's Terry Gilmore. I own Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac in Temecula. In three months, we'll celebrate our thirty-second year in business. But we actually purchased the land in nineteen eighty-seven, so, and we actually went through the complete building process through Riverside County. But when we became a city in eighty-nine, you guys wouldn't accept it, because you wanted to do it yourself. So we went through you, and that's where I met Ron Parks. And I want to tell a quick story, and then I'll say a few comments and be done. But originally, we wanted, my partner was a Chevrolet guy through and through, and he wanted to put blue Chevrolet, blue tiles on our roof. And the tower plaza had just been completed, Peter will probably remember. It was, it was pretty contentious on the tiles they put on the roof. So my partner said to me, we were in Ventura, he said, "Would you drive down and meet the mayor?" And I went, "Well, yeah, I guess." He goes, "Take some tiles, I want you to close this thing when you go down there." So I met him at Penfold at eight o'clock on a Monday morning, and we had a great chat. I mean, anyone that's known Ron knows that incredible smile, and it seemed like every time we talked about something, it was that big smile. So he says, "So, show me these tiles." So I opened them up, and I take them out, and he's looking at them for like twenty seconds, he's turning them over, he's moving them around. He looks at me with that big smile, and he goes, "These are the ugliest tiles I've ever seen." And I went, "Oh, my gosh." "So you, you don't like them?" And he goes, "No, I hate them. I, I don't, I wouldn't put them on my roof." And I went, "Oh, my gosh." I'm thinking, "My, my partner's going to be so mad at me." So anyway, he goes, "But leave me the tiles, and let me think about it. Let me see if I can come to, to like these." So I called my partner, and I go, he goes, "How'd it go?" And I went, "Boy, what a nice guy." I mean, he, he was really a nice, nice man. He goes, "Well, so they're okay?" And he goes, I go, "Well, not exactly. He, he's going to think about it. I didn't tell Bob the whole story." So like a week later, I'm in Ventura, and I get a call, it's from Ron Parks. And Ron said, "Do you think any other car dealers are going to come to Temecula?" And I went, "Well, I don't know. I hope so, Ron. I mean, the more, the better. It's good business, it's good for our business." I was, "Well?" He goes, "Well, you know, based on that, and based on you wanting to build a Chevrolet dealership in Temecula, I'm going to go ahead and kind of talk to the planning commission, and I, I think we should put those blue tiles on there." And that's how I met Ron Parks. I was honored to speak at his funeral service. I'm honored to stand in front of you tonight and speak about a man that I knew incredibly well, a man of high integrity, of good character, but most importantly, he loved Temecula. I mean, he loved it. And for us that was here back when the CRC was being founded, I wasn't a part of that foundation that was gathering money, three hundred thousand dollars. But I talked to Sean Nelson yesterday for about an hour, and Sean went on and on about Ron's love for parks, and Ron's love for providing youth in community centers, and how difficult it was to convince everyone back then to only get three hundred thousand dollars from the community and to sell bonds for five million. And the way we see Temecula now, and the way I get to look at it in retrospect, since I don't work in it anymore, is that, boy, this, this is a great place to live, it's a great place to do business. It's just because of the people like Ron and that first city council. I don't know where they got the vision. I, I honestly, I've been involved in enough organizations to know that it takes an incre- an incredible passion to, to look that far out and, and determine things that the city needs. So I thank you for considering Ron. I thank you for naming this beautiful facility in his honor. I hope you all have a great holiday season, and I personally want to thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kelly Avon, to be followed by Bob Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for your consideration to name the Community Recreation Center. I'm short, I got to go way down here. Thank you for your consideration to name the Community Recreation Center after the first mayor of our wonderful city. My name is Kelly Avon, and I am the stepdaughter of Ron Parks. I am here tonight. I didn't know I was going to get emotional. I am here tonight representing my mom, Tabby Parks. My family moved to Temecula in nineteen seventy-three, when I was just six years old. So we have seen for ourselves the amazing growth of Temecula over the past fifty years, and we appreciate not only Ron's vision for Temecula, but also the founding members of our city council. In nineteen eighty-nine, Ron was elected as Temecula's first mayor. As you know, he served two terms on the city council before serving as the city's Deputy Director of Public Works from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and six. Ron took great pride in solving problems, building consensus, and enhancing the quality of life in the region. Prior to Ron being elected to city council, he was instrumental in the development of Temecula through his work with Kaiser Development. And once elected, he continued to provide, I can't see through my tears. One sec. He continued to provide his foresight and knowledge to help create a foundation for Temecula that we as residents enjoy today. Ron always made time for serving his community in other capacities as well. He coached Pop Warner Youth Football, served as a charter member of the Rotary Club of Temecula, was one of four founders of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest Riverside County, and he earned the prestigious Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce Lifetime Achievement Award in two thousand and eight. Whether he was dressed up like Santa Claus during Christmas, or as Ernest Hemingway in a look-alike contest, Ron always brought cheer into people's lives and lived his life to the fullest. A truly remarkable individual whose vivacious spirit, forthright, and honest demeanor were an inspiration to those whose lives he touched, Ron left his legacy on Temecula in so many ways. In closing, and on behalf of my mom, we want to thank you for this consideration. We trust that you will honor Ron Parks appropriately, and we are very grateful for recognizing a life well-lived. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Brown, to be followed by John Meyer.
Good evening.
Not often I get to raise the microphone up, so thank you very much. I'm here to support Ron Parks and having something in a city in his name. I'm going to give you a little history about Ron, not a lot, but Ron was an engineer and started working in Temecula area with the Kaiser-Etna Group in the development of Rancho, California. He also worked with previous company in the development of the Fifteen Freeway to Las Vegas. He was a real community person. He was involved in many projects in the city of Temecula. He was part of the community group that built the sports park on Margarita Road. He was the founder of the golf group F.O.S. Yeah, and had many, many business owners in it that were players, and it is still going today after forty-plus years. He was part of the Chamber of Commerce. He started the Noon Rotary Club of Temecula and worked to create the Rotary Park on Pujo Street. Ron Parks was the first mayor of Temecula and loved this community. He was Mr. Temecula for a long time. Ron was one of my best friends, and one of the nicest people you could ever meet. He was, he was involved with the Temecula Town Hall Association and the Mirata Creek Master Plan. All of this information came from Dennis Chenniaf, Larry Markham, and Bill Perlett, and these are old-time Temecula people that some of you may know, some of you may not know, but they know Ron, and they love to talk about him. Most of them have moved out of the area, though. I don't think you could pay a better tribute to Ron than having something in Temecula with his name on it. I want to thank you for your time and appreciate whatever you do with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Meyer, to be followed by Kim Wilder.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Schwenk, and members of the City Council. My name is John Meyer, and I spent eighteen years working with the city of Temecula, and some of that time I spent as the Director of Redevelopment. During this time, I had the privilege to serve for and work with Ron Parks in his role as the city's first mayor, two-term council member, and later as the city's Deputy Director of Public Works. My favorite Ron story is we'd often have employee lunches, and we'd have fun and trivia games and everything, and so my favorite story about Ron is, we had a question, the question was, "How many parks were there in the city of Temecula when we incorporated?" And everyone would answer, everyone would answer, "One, the sports park, the Ronald Reagan Park today." And so the answer was, "No, we had two, Sports Park and Ron Parks." I'd like to thank city staff and Subcommittee members Jessica Alexander and Mayor Protem Ta- uh, Mayor Pro-, I got to slow down, Mayor Protem Stewart, for their support of recognizing the city's first mayor, Ron Parks, with the renaming of the Community Recreation Center in his name. It is a fitting recognition for a man that gave so much to the community. In my role as Redevelopment Director, I also had the pleasure to work with Roger Epperson and his partner Neil Cleveland, and I can tell you that Old Town would not be what it is today if it weren't for property owners like Roger and Neil, who shared the vision and made contributions that led Old Town to become the vibrant, vibrant district it is today. The renaming of the Stampede Parking Lot is a wonderful tribute to Roger. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Wilder, to be followed by Phyllis Ruse.
Good evening.
Good evening. On May twenty-third, twenty thirteen, the Temecula City Council unanimously voted to name the hills to the west of Temecula Wilder Hills, in honor of a very special woman you may or may not know of. So who is this person, and how did she come by this honor? Her name was Barbara Wilder, and I am her daughter, Kim Wilder. My mom was a very beautiful and strong-willed lady with a big heart and a warm smile, but we'll get back to that in a minute. She grew up in L.A. and had been a model in her youth, and after graduating from UCLA, she married my father, Miles, a television writer and producer. They were married fifty-four years. They moved to Temecula from L.A. in nineteen ninety-four, when my dad retired from the biz. You may recall, there was very little resemblance then to the Temecula of today. This was back before the mall, the Trader Joe's, and when Big Horse Feed was the only outpost for miles along Highway Seventy-Nine, just past a newly-built little community called Red Hawk. My mom really embraced her new community and settled into the life of avocado ranching in Duluth. It wasn't until San Diego Gas and Electric threatened her beautiful, adopted city with their plan to seize land by eminent domain and march dangerous, unsightly, one-hundred-and-ninety-foot power transmission towers right across central Temecula and up the hills into Duluth, that my mom truly found her calling. She sprang into action, Erin Brockovich-like, and helped found Save Southwest Riverside County, a small, homegrown organization of residents who banded together and hosted barbecues, bake sales, and fundraisers. This small but mighty cadre of concerned citizens, with the support of the Temecula City Council, raised enough money to hire a well-known Bay Area environmental law firm to take on the multi-billion-dollar energy giant. And after years of organizing, raising money, and fighting, they amazingly prevailed. David beat Goliath, and our city was saved, for the time being. Fast forward several years, and another mega corporation again threatened our city. This time, it was Granite Construction and their proposed gravel quarry. Dubbed the Liberty Quarry, this ninety-square-mile, ninety-square-mile, open-pit gravel mine was slated to blast twenty-four hours a day on land adjacent to the Santa Margarita Ecological Preserve, on land that was sacred to the Pachanga people. Well, that just could not stand- Well, that just could not stand. Bobby Wilder sprang into action once again and co-founded Save Our Southwest Hills, S.O.S. Hills as it was known, who again worked alongside the Temecula City Council and San Diego State University to fight against the huge, deep-pocketed mining company to raise awareness and necessary funds to prevent this dangerous blight on Temecula, its citizens, and our unparalleled air quality. The fight lasted almost seven years of lawsuits, environmental surveys, and impact reports. Supervisor Bob Buster called this fight against the quarry "the greatest grassroots effort he has witnessed during his tenure." It was then that the Pachanga Band of Luceno Indians came through and purchased that land from the mining company, preventing anyone from ever building upon or destroying their sacred mountain ever again. And a few weeks ago, on November 15th, we celebrated the 11th anniversary of Puesca Mountain Day, a joyous and momentous day that shall ever be celebrated in our city's history. So how could a sweet, delicate-looking, blue-eyed lady in her late 70s accomplish all this so late in life? Well, my mom was a redhead and possessed a wicked blend of tenacity and grit. She was so much more than just a pretty face. My father and I affectionately referred to her as the iron fist in the velvet glove, due to her unique blend of strength, smarts, tact, drive, and leadership skills, which is exactly what helped her accomplish these amazing results. As you may know, my sweet mom passed away in May of 2013, a few short weeks before this resolution was enacted. She did live to see the miraculous end to the Liberty Quarry fight, and her family, friends, and I are happy and grateful that you have chosen to honor my mom for all her hard work and dedication to keeping our magnificent city clean and safe for future generations. I want to share my appreciation for approving the Wilder Hills sign to be placed along the western bypass once it is constructed, as well as for the temporary placement of the sign at the base of those hills where Temecula Parkway ends. Thank you for letting me share a little bit about my mom. Speaking about her and knowing that you have honored her in this way helps keep her memory alive, not just in my mind, but in those of my kids, her grandchildren, but also in the minds of present and future residents of our city. We are grateful that the name Barbara Wilder will forever be honored and linked to this beautiful city of Temecula and the hills she fought so hard to protect. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Phyllis Ruse to be followed by our final speaker, Ginger Saafstrom.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Schwank, council members and staff. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening on this item. My name is Phyllis Ruse. I'm a resident of Temecula, and I am the president of the Friends of the Temecula Libraries. I believe, I believe you have a copy of my letter of support for the renaming of the community room at the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library. You have Rosie Vanderhooch's resume before you in the form of letters of support, so I'm not going to belabor her accomplishments. Rosie has served this community in many and varied ways for her entire adult life. Since 1989, she has lived, she has led the Temecula Libraries to be the busiest libraries in the Riverside County system. Let's just pause for a moment and think about that. We throw that description around a lot, but what does it really mean? It means that our library consistently, day by day, month by month, serves more patrons and circulates more items than any other library in the Riverside County system. That's quite an amazing accomplishment, and there is a reason for that beyond the community's value for libraries, because this community, I've lived in several and I have used a lot of libraries, but I have never seen a community that values its libraries and its library services like Temecula. But it is directly related to the service mentality that Rosie has instilled in her staff and her ever searching for ways to keep libraries relevant and evolving to meet the needs of her patrons. She told me once that libraries will always be relevant because they continue to evolve themselves, but libraries are bricks and mortar. It takes people with a desire to serve their community and for that ability to see what their community needs and wants and to put those things into action. As you know, Rosie retired in August of this year. So in closing, I would only add that Rosie Vanderhooch is an exceptional person who has dedicated herself to public service with distinction, integrity, and excellence. She is the one, she's one of the most dedicated and innovative people I know. She has earned the respect of all who know her, and I will be forever grateful to have had the privilege to work with her and to call her my friend. It is with great enthusiasm and with no reservation that I encourage you to please approve the renaming of the community room at the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library to the Rosie Vanderhooch Community Room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the last speaker under this item is Ginger Saafstrom.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schwank, council members and staff. My name is Ginger Saafstrom, and I am the manager of the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library. It is my distinct pleasure to recommend the renaming of the community room at the library, the Rosie Vanderhooch Community Room, honoring her unparalleled 50 years of dedicated library service in Temecula. A Temecula resident since 1971, Rosie served nine years on the Board of Trustees of the Temecula Valley Unified School District, on the Temecula-Murieta Interagency Council, and was a member of the Blue Ribbon Committee for the City of Temecula's Development of the Quality of Life Master Plan for Temecula. Since 2011, she has served on the Board of the Cemetery District, heading a committee to develop a five-year plan to renovate the Temecula Public Cemetery. But exceptional library services for our entire community have always been her true heart and driving passion. Rosie's career began at the original community library when it was housed in a cramped 750-square-foot storefront in Tower Plaza. And if you were not here then, let me tell you, it was something. When the library faced closure due to budget constraints, she offered to work free of charge. With Temecula's incorporation in 1989 and the Great Housing Boom came increased demand for a much larger library. Rosie was instrumental in seeking support for the building of the Temecula Public Library, later renamed the Grace Melman Community Library in 1992. While library manager, library services continued to expand and flourish, soon necessitating an even larger state-of-the-art library. The beautiful 34,000-square-foot Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library opened in December 2006, and it continues to be exponentially the busiest library in Riverside County to this day. Under her 17 years of visionary leadership as branch manager, the services, programs, and meeting space for countless customers, from babies to senior citizens, local service groups, and small businesses, it has provided a dazzling array of services for all. Her impact on the library and our community has been huge and lasting. Working with Rosie for over 31 years has been a true joy and a real privilege. I cannot think of a more befitting way to honor her 50-year legacy of stellar and exceptional contributions to the library, to the city of Temecula and its citizens than by renaming the library's community room, the Rosie Vanderhooch Community Room. Thank you. And I think Rosie is here with, there she is.
Rosie.
Her new role. And she's got Carolyn II with her because her new job is training assistance job at dogs, and she's doing a wonderful job, so stop by and say hi and congratulate her. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm gonna ask our city manager to briefly read some of the nomination packet for Ed Morrell. We heard public comments for the balance of those entries, and we felt it was appropriate that, at least for the benefit of the record and then the family listening at home, that we read a little bit about Ed Morrell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I had the privilege of knowing Ed Morrell for 30 years, and so it's my honor to read this nomination that came before the subcommittee and the city council. It reads, "Ed Morrell was the founder and owner of Viper Volleyball. He started Viper Volleyball for his daughter Kylie back in 1996. His greatest joys were his family, including his wife Lanny, who owns Temecula Dance Company, and two daughters, Katie and Kylie. While residing in the city of Temecula and operating several Temecula-based businesses, Ed proudly served on the Board of Directors of several charities, including the Make a Difference Foundation, which had given many Viper players, coaches, families, and friends the opportunity to serve those less fortunate. Ed Morrell should be recognized for his community participation and leadership in Temecula because of the significant impact he had on the local community and the positive change he brought about. His philanthropic endeavors, dedication, and love for people inspired many. Mr. Morrell quietly assisted orphanages in Tijuana, Mexico. He also had a heart for the unsheltered and homeless. Through generous contributions of his time, talent, Mr. Morrell was routinely engaged with nonprofits like Project Touch and Community Mission of Hope, helping others where and how he could. Ed believed in the spirit of connection through people. Those people were and are Temecula residents and businesses. Furthermore, as a successful entrepreneur, Ed owned and operated multiple thriving businesses in Temecula, contributing to the growth and success of our local economy. His commitment to excellence, perseverance, and business acumen not only led to the prosperity of his own company, but also earned him the respect and admiration of his colleagues and peers. Ed's leadership by example and his ability to lead with warmth, kindness, and genuine love for others made a lasting impact on the hearts of those he touched. He was dedicated to giving back to the community, and his lifelong dedication to philanthropy and community service is deserving of recognition. Ed Morrell's involvement in the community of Temecula has left a positive imprint on the lives of many, making him an exceptional leader worthy of recognition and appreciation. Ed Morrell passed away in 2022." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, at this point, I'll open up to comments from the council.
So I'm on the subcommittee for the public recognitions, and as, I'm really glad you all came and spoke about, you know, the people who are being proposed, because it really does give a sense of background to the public who's viewing this of why we want to recognize these people, because they're exceptional people, and just their love for this city.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just an honor to be in the presence of the family and friends and everyone that came out to speak for these amazing individuals, and I think it's our privilege to approve this nomination, so thank you everyone for coming and speaking.
And just real quick, same as Stu has stated, you know, being on the subcommittee, it was an honor to be on there and really listen to a lot of the background coming from staff of some of these individuals we maybe knew a little bit about, but having the families and the friends come out to really give a full perspective on their lives and their impact on the city just makes it so much easier to be able to just push this forward. So it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to bring this to the dais, and yeah, I just hope and pray that it passes. This is a great, great thing for our city.
All right, and I'll just finish off by saying it really is helpful to see so many folks come out in support of everyone here tonight, as we read through the packets, and many of us know most, you know, if not all of the folks anyways, but as we're reading through the packets, but it's so impactful to hear some of those firsthand stories and to see Rosie's dog as you're in the back, it's what a beautiful puppy. It's just meaningful that, you know, this is who we are as a city, and most of these folks built this city into what it is today, and we get the privilege to carry that on, carry that legacy on, and it truly is a privilege. So we thank you all for coming, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 15.
I'll move approval.
Second. And we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, and as a reminder, these recognitions will happen in the upcoming year, and everyone will be invited from the council to family members. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalfis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Stewart?
Yes.
And Mayor Schwank?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
All right, wonderful. And I know, like we mentioned at the beginning, we'll be in contact with everyone as it's an appropriate time to honor those folks. All right, well, thank you for indulging me in moving to item 15. We'll go ahead and move back to board and commission reports. We'll go ahead and start with the ready commission tonight with Chair Steed.
Good evening, Mayor Schwank, city council members. So the ready commission is made up of seven residents who serve together as an advisory group to the city council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within the city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations. Our last meeting was on November 9th, 2023. We invited, the ready commission invited the TVUSD students to receive the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. So we had a really, really good meeting, and the program included the following. We had an educational video outlining the Native American Heritage Month. If you have not seen that, I encourage all of you to check it out. It was so educational and just a really, really good movie to watch. We had comments from Mayor Schwank, we had comments from Mayor Pro Tim Stewart, and also video comments from Supervisor Washington. We had a reading and presentation of the proclamation, and then comments by the students for the Indigenous Peoples' Club of Great Oak, and then a presentation by Vice Chair Faulkner. So it was a great meeting. Thank you for coming also, City Council Kalfas, we appreciate that. And then lastly, our next commission meeting will be on January 11th here at 6:00 PM, so after the holidays. We're looking forward to that, and that is it for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then move to our Chair of Planning Commission, Lenea Turley-Trejo.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. This is our, my wonderful colleagues here, Bob Pagel is Vice Chair, Adam Ramirez, Fernando Solis, and Gary Watts. And we serve as a statutory planning agency for the city of Temecula and have the awesome responsibility of recommending to the city council those things that are important as far as have to do with zoning and lots and building and all of that that I knew nothing about when I started in planning commission, so it's really fun to know about it now. I should know about it by now. Our last meeting was on November 15th, and we had two items that we reviewed and approved. So the Best Buy that used to be on Temecula Parkway is now going to be a Smart &amp; Final. And Smart &amp; Final, super?
Extra.
Extra. I knew something like that. Extra, super. So it's, it's gonna have some extra things. There we go. Wow, didn't know that was coming.
Sure, Smart &amp; Finals, very excited about your PSA here.
Yeah, so they are going, so what they asked for was a Type 86, which is actual instructional tasting of alcohol there at the store, so they have a certain area for vendors that come in and want to do that, specifically wine, those that are, you know, in wine country, and so that's kind of different. And so we voted on that 4-0, and we're excited to have Smart &amp; Final down the street. Woohoo, Smart &amp; Final Extra. Okay. Next slide, thanks. Okay, so this was a really interesting part of our meeting, and we had lots of questions. This was, we reviewed and recommended approval to the amendments of Titles 16 and 17 regarding the requirements of SB 9 for urban lot splits and two-unit developments. So really tricky stuff, and that will be coming to you all soon. I'm grateful to be on the subcommittee with Gary Watts and, and kind of get the full flux of it, but, you know, I just want to say that I am really proud of our city staff, specifically our planning, community development, that have taken all of these things on with SB 9 that we've had to do as a city. It's just incredible how proactive they've been, and they're explaining it to us as it goes, right? I mean, it's just happening, and so we're trying to do, they're trying to do the best for the city, and we are as a planning commission also with what we have and what we have to do, and the best that we can do. So we did vote on this, there was one speaker, and he had concerns about the lines for certain lots, so that will probably be coming to you also, but we voted 4-0 to recommend that we approve- that we approve these amendments. And that was it that we had, I think. Next slide.
All right.
And our next meeting is December sixth.
Okay.
All right. So hopefully, we'll see you all there. It is an extra special meeting always. Thank you.
We'll take your word for it. Chair of the Community Services Commission, Catherine Seismar, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Schwank, Mayor Potem Stewart, and city council members. I'm Kathy Seismar, I'm chairperson for Temecula's Community Services Commission. We are a commission made up of five local residents, and the purpose of our commission is to review and make recommendations on topics related to the parks and recreation element of the general plan and to work to provide parks and recreation services and programs for the community. Our last meeting was here in council chambers on Monday, November thirteenth, 2023, and at that meeting, we approved our action minutes for our October ninth, 2023 meeting. And during the month of November, we were busy. Our commissioners came out and attended the Red Hawk Community Park reopening, which you see pictured there, and we also had fun attending the shuffleboard ribbon cutting opening at the Mary Phillips Senior Center. And let's see, we have a lot of fun things here in December that we'll be doing that we're looking forward to, including our Christmas parade this Friday. And our next meeting will be here in council chambers on Monday, December eleventh, 2023. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now turn to our public safety report, and we have our Riverside County Sheriff's Department here. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, and city residents, good evening. Waiting for my slide to pop up. There we go. I wanted to let you know that your deputies responded to just under six thousand calls for service in the month of October. That's approximately one hundred and ninety-three calls for service a day. Year to date is just over sixty-three thousand calls for service, which isn't much different than what we saw in 2022. And if there's not any questions, I will end my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, we appreciate you and your team.
Thank you.
All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments on non-agendized items.
Okay, let me call the first speaker.
Yes, the first speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by the last speaker, Melissa Bourbonnay.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm just gonna wing this tonight. I didn't prepare anything. Housing, housing, housing. The planning commission just gave their report on, you know, what they do in planning and zoning and all of that, and I'd like to ask the council and the planning commission, what do they do in regards to the workforce when it comes to that? It has been brought to my attention that city council, city staff are not aware of who exists within our local workforce. That's super critical if we're gonna create attainable homeownership and housing options and opportunities and reduce traffic, improve on pollution, et cetera, et cetera. What and how will you learn about the workforce? Who are the grocers? Who's going to that new Smart and Final Extra? Who's gonna work there? Where are they gonna live? Who are these people? How do we get this data? How are we gonna get it? Because it's super important. At the last time I spoke here, last city council meeting, I mentioned that seven years ago, when I first spoke here, that city staff took me in and sat me down with two social workers, two police officers, and two city staff members. And their way of advocating for me was, let's figure out your numbers. Where can we get you? And they mentioned places like Coachella. I work at Trader Joe's right here. Coachella, as if we're gonna sweep me off somewhere. And then Erica Russo communicated to me, it looks like you run a really tight budget, you're fiscally accountable, your son's not gonna need you come high school so much anymore, because, I don't know, apparently people have access to extracurricular activities where their children have extra things to do. We don't have the luxury of that. So turns out, my kid needs a parent around since we're already down one, and a community would help. So when will anybody up here start talking about the workforce and the housing in which we need to figure out? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker and final speaker on non-agenda is Melissa Bourbonnay.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Melissa Bourbonnay from Upward Community. I would like to expand upon what Laurel Lamont just discussed, but I would like to start by asking that you practice not just listening, listening, and not being on your phones, but actually listening to public comments, but empathetic listening, because Mayor Schwank, you mentioned earlier that relationship building is really important to this process to a community. Empathetic listening builds relationships. It's the best way to build relationship and to and to build a coalition to care for a community, because, right? Didn't somebody say it takes a village? Empathetic listening is not about just hearing the words coming out of my mouth, it's about trying to understand the words coming out of my mouth, trying to understand the stories, the personal stories that Laurel Lamont shares, her lived experience and the lived experience of all people who fall in affordable housing or within the workforce. So please listen and try to understand, not just come up with your defense or all the reasons why I'm wrong, because I'm not even coming to you. Upward Community isn't coming to you with our opinion. We're coming to you with a lot of facts. We're coming to you with something that is well-established, that Archog produced right in 2020, as we talked about before, a fifty-eight-page report. That's Archog, and you're a member. Temecula is a member of Archog. So if Archog produced a fifty-eight-page report that reiterated over and over that this is a housing crisis, that we're in the midst of a severe housing crisis, and we need for the cities to take action, that's not my opinion. Now, you can dismiss it if you want, because you're not directly impacted by it, I would I would imagine, but that's not my opinion. The fact that the state, even this year, just this year, not even counting previous years, passed through fifty-six, fifty-six bills, I'm sure a lot of them are on your desk, and if they're not, then they will be soon, specific to housing, specific to removing the barriers to building affordable housing. Where do you think those barriers come from? The barriers come from cities, so the state has intervened because the cities have failed. That's not my opinion. That's fifty-six bills that have come down just this year, and it's gonna make you, you're gonna be forced to adjust accordingly. So rather than just complaining about the state and just putting this off further and further, let's work together, let's empathize with others, and let's fix this. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the last public comment on non-agendized items. We do have one one comment on consent calendar when we get there.
Okay, thank you very, what item is that? Just?
It's item number ten, and it will not warrant you taking the item off the agenda.
Okay, appreciate that information. All right, we'll go and move to our city council reports. I'll now look to my colleagues for any council reports, anything? Mayor Potem Stewart?
Yes, I think we have a slide, a couple of them maybe. All right, so I attended two Christmas tree lightings here the last week. One was at the mall on Friday, which is always a spectacular event with fireworks and the whole nine yards, and it was it was truly felt Christmasy. And then last night was the Christmas tree lighting at the Duck Pond, which, again, our community services puts on and does an amazing job making everybody feel like this is their community, this is their home. And so it was it was a really, really, it's always such a good thing to start off the Christmas season doing and seeing, so that's my.
All right, thank you very much. Anything? No? All right, I've got a slide for our our parade on Friday, so speaking of community service events and events that build community, and this is one of them. So this Friday night, December first, at seven P.M. is when it starts, we're gonna have our annual Santa's Electric Light Parade here in Old Town, and for the first time, we'll actually be streaming it live on Temecula TV Channel Three, or you can go to our website and or the City of Temecula app to watch that if you'd like, but I encourage you to come to the parade if you haven't. It's quite a wonderful experience between the school bands and the mounted posse and everyone there. It's just really, really a wonderful evening. And then I just want to say, just sort of preemptively thank staff, and when I say staff, it is literally every single person that works in the city of Temecula helps on this, from every department. I just appreciate all the work that you put into this and to make this a nice evening and a safe evening for our community. So I thank you in advance and look forward to seeing everyone there this Friday night. And it looks like it's going to be a nice evening, so grab a scarf and a pair of gloves and come enjoy community. And then we have another episode of Just the Facts with Zach. I know everybody loves those, and I've been enjoying making them, so if we could go ahead and enroll the next episode, please.
Hey there, Snidgen. I'm here as Zach Schwank, and I'd like to welcome you back to Just the Facts with Zach. In our last episode, we explored our safe and prepared community core value. And if you missed it, head on over to @CityofTemecula and check it out. In this episode, we will examine our economic prosperity, community core value. So what exactly do we mean by economic prosperity? At its most basic level, we strive to be a place where everyone can live, work, and play. Historically, through resident surveys, which we always use to inform our decision-making process, Temeculans have also expressed a strong desire to be able to live and work in Temecula. Building up some of our past accomplishments, we've expanded the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs' Exchange, which is now Temecula's Business Resource Center and Business Incubator for entrepreneurs. The TV E2 provides tools and resources for businesses to grow and succeed, all while creating local high-wigs jobs right here in Temecula. The city's overall economic goals are to create a high-value, high-run, and diversified economic base. We desire to increase access to higher education and workforce housing, expand career technical education opportunities, and match those opportunities to the current and future needs of Temecula businesses. As Temecula's economic base continues to support city services, we will turn our attention and focus on defining and advancing our goals for economic prosperity within the broader context of the regional economy. Alongside our regional partners, Temecula and the thriving Temecula Valley have a bright future, and I, for one, am excited and proud to be a part of this wonderful community. I hope you enjoy learning more about one of the ways we impact our residents, businesses, and visitors here in Temecula, and how we bring our quality-of-life master plan to life. Take care, and I hope you all can get out of town, live, experience, and enjoy everything Temecula offers.
All right. Well, thank you very much for playing that, and I want to thank the the team downstairs and TCSD, Mike Maury and Jeff Lawrence, and everyone that's involved in bringing that project to fruition. It's been an enjoyable process. One more episode next month, and we'll wrap up Just the Facts with Zach. All right, we'll go ahead and move, assuming there's no other council reports, we'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar. Item number one is wave reading of title.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and call that public comment now. And one and only public comment is from Adam Eventoff.
Good evening, and I'm sorry about that. She always gets me run the right track.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Hope the evening finds you all well. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for considering investing in MSJC and in Cal State San Marcos, the fact that you guys recognize that investing in education and eventually by extension workforce development is critical to the future of our economy, our workforce resiliency as the economy changes, and the importance of developing and keeping and retaining and attracting new business and existing business to our community. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you, appreciate it. This could lead to some fantastic things, maybe even Cal State Temecula, where we could have volleyball teams, baseball teams, and I don't know, we could maybe even name them maybe like the Fighting Wine Makers or something. Anyway, again, just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for considering that investment.
All right, thank you. Any more public speakers? Okay, thanks. We'll go ahead and start. Item number one is wave reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item two, approve action minutes of November fourteenth, 2023. Three, approve list of demands. Four, adopt ordinance number two zero two three dash eleven, amending Title Seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to implement the programs in the city's housing element. This is a second reading. Item number five, adopt ordinance number two zero two three dash twelve, amending Title Seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling unit regulations, second reading. Six, approve city council meeting scheduled for December twenty twenty-three. Seven, approve grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Urban Development for community project funding for the Deportola Road Jedediah Smith Road Roundabout Project, PW twenty-three dash zero one. Eight, approve grants of public utility easement and temporary construction easement on property owned by Long's Drug Stores California LLC in connection with the Santa Grotuitus Creek Phase Two Margarita Undercrossing, APN nine two zero zero eight zero zero two zero. Nine, approve agreements with Hewlett Packard Financial Services Company for Technology Infrastructure and Data Bank Holdings Limited for Disaster Recovery Co-Coloration Services. Ten, approve First Amendment to Community Reinvestment Program funding to California State University San Marcos for facility improvements at Matt Sandaceno College Temecula Valley Campus. Eleven, approve Second Amendment to Agreement with Falcon Engineering Services, Inc. for On-Call Construction Management Services. Twelve, accept improvements and file notice of completion for the pavement rehabilitation program citywide, Inez Road, Solana Way, Nicholas Road, and Winchester Road, PW twenty-one dash ten. And that is it, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do a voice vote?
Yes, we will do a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry, the motion was councilmember, okay, so Mayor Potem Stewart, and the second was?
Councilmember Kalfis.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalfis?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stewart?
Yes.
And Mayor Schwank?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Right now, recess city council meeting to the Temecula Community Services District Meeting.
So I will bring to order the Temecula Community Service District Meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. Are there any public comments? All right, so we only have one agenda item, and that's the Consent Calendar, item number thirteen, approve action minutes of November fourteenth, 2023.
Move approval?
Second. Right, it's been moved in second. Let's vote.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a quick roll call vote. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalfis?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stewart?
Yes.
And Mayor Schwank?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
All right, so we'll move on to Community Service Director Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one quick slide this evening. I'd just like to remind everybody that this, or I'm sorry, not this Saturday, next Saturday, December ninth, we will be featuring our Temecula Culture Days Christmas Around the World Celebration. So our Culture Days is a program on the second Saturday of every month where we celebrate a different culture, country, ethnicity, and we look at cuisine, activities, arts and crafts, textiles, anything, music that might be of particular note regarding that culture. The December second Saturday, our Culture Day, is extra fun, because what we do is we go back through the year and we look at the cultures we celebrated, and then we focus on how Christmas is celebrated around the world. That will be Saturday, December ninth, from eleven A.M. to one P.M. at Temecula Valley Museum right by Sam Hicks Monument Park. And that concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you. And I believe I have another slide. All right, so I was in my office, and this is what I got in the mail, our Community Service Department on the cover of California Parks and Rec, and super impressed with the article on the inside. I mean, we got the full centerfold spread, so thank you, Community Services, for putting Temecula on the map and the engaging, seasoned professionals as mentors. and the engaging, seasoned professionals as mentors. How cool is that? I mean, because I know they do put on presentations at the CPRS conferences, so that means we are on the map. So thank you, Erica, and your team. You guys are doing an amazing job here in Temecula.
Thank you so much. I would just like to shout out Superintendent Bea Barnett, who wrote the article and, you know, kind of reached out to CPRS and highlighted what we do, and they jumped on it. And Shauna Sarnowski, who was here earlier taking pictures, you know, with the quality of pictures she can provide us, it's no wonder they wanted to put them on the cover. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Any other reports to go ahead?
Yeah, thanks, President Stewart. I just wanted to highlight something that happened at the Christmas tree lighting because I think it's important, and it speaks to the value of the events that we do in our community. My wife is a school teacher at Temecula Elementary School, and there was a student who recently immigrated to America, does not speak English, is not her first language. She does not speak actually any English. She was struggling to find a place, to feel like, is this my home? And to say that the first, you know, few weeks to a month of schooling for her were difficult would be a huge understatement. As we were sort of mulling around at the tree lighting last night, we see this family playing and this little girl running around, and my wife says, oh my gosh, that's the girl from the school. And I'm not going to mention her name just so she can have some privacy. But she went over, and this girl was just thoroughly enthralled with everything that we were doing as a community. She certainly felt welcomed by TCSD staff and the community at large. And I think for me, that's like the core of like who we are as a community. And it just really spoke to me, and I wanted to share that tonight, how important these events that we do are, that really bring a really diverse community together to celebrate. And it's just an important reminder, especially this time of year, but it just really hit me. I just, if you can think about that through the next couple of months and how important these events are and the things that we do for our city, I think that's just a good way to look at it. So I just wanted to share that for TCSD. Thank you.
Thank you, that's awesome. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting till the next.
Okay, and I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting to move to our item number 14, a public hearing, to introduce ordinance amending Title 5 and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code making various technical revisions. May we have a staff report, please?
Of course. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Today I'll be presenting the first read of LR 23-180, which is an amendment to Title 5 and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. Okay, so Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted in 1990. Since its adoption, the city council has periodically made amendments to various sections of the code to improve its clarity, improve processes, and implement state law. This proposed ordinance would amend Titles 5 and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. And this process is an annual thing we do here. City planners work cooperatively with residents, applicants, developers, anyone who comes to the planner or has planning questions. We identify discrepancies, typos, omissions, errors, anything like that. We keep a running list, and then every year, we bring them to you, as we are this evening, to get these corrections made, to make the code better for everyone. A little bit of ordinance history. This ordinance was seen for the General Plan Update Subcommittee on October 10th, and it was seen by the Municipal Planning Commission, Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee, on October 18th. The Planning Commission, on November the 1st, adopted Resolution 2023-20 recommending the city council adopt the ordinance. And then it is before you tonight. Okay, we'll jump right into the changes. The sole change, Title 5, would modify the time in Section 5.22.140, our appeal section. It's going to modify the time an administrative law judge has to render a decision from 10 days to 30 days. This was at the request of the Office of Administrative Hearing during a previous action. So they asked, they got it. And that completes our Title 5. We're going to dive right into Title 17. For Section 17.04020, our temporary use permits, we're going to add an exemption for temporary events conducted by a school when exclusively on school property. If it goes outside the school property, then they'd be subject to the TUP requirements. For Section 17.04030, our home occupation permits, we're going to clarify that home occupations are permitted a maximum of two commercial vehicles, and this would include instances where a home has more than one home occupation active at that site. So for our table 17.06030, our residential districts, we're going to add Note 12 to the table for small animals, poultry, and outdoor aviary. This is just a note referencing to Title 6, our animal keeping standards, and there's no changes to standards. And then for Table 17.06040, our development standards for our residential districts, and we're going to specify that the unit of measure for the open space is in square feet. Right now it's blank, we just want to specify that. For Table 17.08030, our scheduled permitted uses for our commercial districts, we're going to add yoga and Pilates to the existing aerobics land use greater than and less than 5,000 square feet. And then for Table 17.08040A and B, we're going to be correcting a floor area ratio discrepancy for the professional office zoning designation. Within the general plan, it has a target floor area ratio of 0.35, and the municipal code presently represents .50. We'll be correcting the municipal code to reference the general plan of .35. For our supplemental development standards, Section 1710020, we're going to require all staircases be internalized for new commercial, office, or industrial buildings. And then we're going to require any window, door, security devices, such as window bars or locks, anything like that, not be visible from the public right-of-way. And then we're going to correct a reference related to the type of ABC licensing required for restaurants serving beer and wine and those serving distilled spirits. This is correcting a discrepancy in the code where it states 47 when it should be a 41, and then it should be a Type 41, not Type 42. So we're just correcting those numbers, no changes other than that. Keeping in line with the supplemental development standards, Section 1710020, we're going to add development standards for, standards and limitations for the temporary use of storage containers in all zoning districts. These will be accessory for residential districts, only permitted temporary during the construction of a primary or accessory dwelling unit, and it would need to be removed prior to the final of that building permit. And that would be done through the use of a temporary use permit, which is already in place. They would be permitting commercial, office, and industrial districts on a temporary basis, not to exceed one year, through a temporary use permit. They would require to match the buildings. They could, they'd have to be placed in a storage or loading space. They couldn't take up parking, they couldn't take up landscaping. It has to match the building, no signage, no advertising, anything like that. We want to keep it nice and pretty. And then, keeping with 1710020, we're going to add development standards for commercial battery storage facilities. We've seen these kind of pop up recently. It's a new type of business that's coming in. They come in, they either establish battery storage facilities at vacant sites or some of our industrial sites, and they either buy the electricity at off-hours, middle of the night, store it, and then they sell it later in the day at higher rates. Or they place solar panels on the roof, collect it, and then discharge it later and sell it back to the grid. These are development standards that include a community benefit requirement. They require conditional use permit. They're only permitted in the light industrial districts, and they're only permitted with a conditional use permit. Okay. For our table 17.14030, our scheduled permitted uses in our open space zoning districts, we're going to remove riding stables and shooting galleries as a conditionally permitted use in the open space and open space conservation zoning designations. Last year, when we did this effort, we amended the definition of the open, we limited the recreational uses in these open space and open space conservation zoning designations to be passive recreational activities only. These are not passive, they require infrastructure, power, things like that. So we're going to go ahead and remove these as conditionally permitted. And then, jumping into our ADU standards, Section 17.23030, this is a clarification item that the four-foot setbacks are a minimum and not a maximum. Keeping with our ADUs, Section 17.23040 general requirements, we're going to add a six-foot separation from the detached ADU to other structures. And then in Section 17.23050 ADU standards, we're going to codify City Council Resolution Number 2023-28 regarding the addressing of ADUs. And then getting into definitions, we're going to add a definition for health and exercise club. This is going to be your typical gym, your LA Fitness. It doesn't promote a specific sport or event. It may have sauna or swimming facilities, and it charges a membership fee for entry. And then we're going to modify the definition of specialty market to specify that all specialty markets shall be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. We had some establishment trying to morph into other businesses. This is a way to kind of keep that in line. And that completes our changes. We're going to enter our SEQA determination, and staff has determined that this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15061B3. Staff recommends that the city council introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance. This completes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions, staff? All right, comments or entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, if we could open the public hearing and close the-
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll open the public hearing.
You have no public comments.
We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvis?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Schwanck?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Now move to item 16, is adopt a complete streets program policy. May we have a staff report, please? Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Schwanck and council members. Katie Garcia with the Planning Department. We've been working with our consultants, Farr and Pierce, who are here, on drafting a complete streets policy. This is part of the general plan update and also a requirement from AB 1358. These are already current practices that we're doing, we're just formalizing it. So with that, I will go ahead and forward it over to Katie and Inhelica. They're going to do the facilitating of the presentation.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Inhelica Rocha, and I'm a senior transportation planner at Farr and Pierce. I'm also joined tonight by Katie Cole, a principal at Farr and Pierce. Okay, first, I'm going to start by talking about and explaining what complete streets are. So complete streets are a transportation planning and engineering concept that aims at designing and developing roads so that they're safe and accessible and convenient for all users and all ages and abilities. This approach to street design prioritizes the safety and well-being of our road users and considers the land use context and needs of the community. This aspiration is to create an inclusive, safe, and sustainable network that accommodates the needs of everyone on our roads. By adopting this complete streets policy, it sets a vision for the City of Temecula that prioritizes the safety and well-being of all road users. We established with five goals for this project. The first being creating a policy framework and accountability for complete streets implementation. Second is demonstrating the city's commitment to complete streets. The third is providing clear and defined goals for implementing and developing infrastructure. And fourth is encouraging active transportation modes that reduce VMT and help achieve climate action goals. And then lastly, as Katie mentioned, it will inform the general plan update. So as part of this process, we've been working with the City of Temecula's staff and other stakeholders to develop a collaborative process that began this past July. The primary stakeholder in this process included a staff working group. It was comprised of staff from planning, traffic, and other divisions who play a critical role in implementing complete streets in this city. The staff working group met once a month, and during those conversations, we workshopped every element that's included in the policy that is presented before you, as well as discussing the city's current practices for roadway design and implementation, from routine maintenance, such as repaving and resurfacing, to how CIP projects are budgeted and implemented. Along with staff working groups, we've met with the city council and Planning Commission Subcommittee Groups, and also have presented before the Planning Commission and the Traffic Safety Commission, all to prepare us today for council adoption. So just to provide a little bit of background on kind of what the context is that's driving this policy. So as Katie mentioned, this policy formalizes the city's commitment for implementing complete streets, but it also builds on what the city's already doing, aimed at improving multimodal access on your streets. This is included but not limited to several planning efforts that your city has in place, such as the multi-use trails and bikeway master plan, the Quality of Life Master Plan, which was mentioned earlier today, which specifically calls out adopting a complete streets policy as a key strategy for the transportation section. There's also the Local Road Safety Plan and the Urban Forest Management Plan, all really aimed at improving safety and incorporating different elements of what makes a street complete. Lastly, which was mentioned before, is AB 1358, or the California Complete Streets Policy Act. This requires cities and counties in California to consider the needs of all road users in planning and design of transportation projects when that receives state or federal funding. Additionally, it requires that cities and counties, as part of any substantial revision to their circulation element, they must include complete streets. So several guiding principles that you'll see presented in the policy set before you or goals to prioritize implementing complete streets include: serving all users and modes. So developing a transportation network that is context-sensitive to your community, but also prioritizes the safety and comfort, accessibility, and convenience of all ages within the right road use context. Second is increasing transportation and mobility options, so incorporating the considerations of those who walk, bike, take public transit, or choose alternative modes into the planning and construction endeavors. The third is establishing a connected multimodal network. So what exactly does this mean? First, this may include expanding or enhancing the existing transportation system. Secondly, you can focus on completing missing links or gaps in the network. And lastly, appropriately sizing streets to promote safe user behavior and strike harmonious balances so that all modes are served. Fourth is to coordinate land use and transportation, meaning creating a balanced, modern, and integrated system that's capable of serving your current residents and your future. And then lastly, a guiding element is to preserve the community character that we've been hearing about so much this evening. So establishing a transportation system that focuses on reducing car dependency, improving quality of life, while maintaining the unique qualities and assets that make Temecula a desirable place to live. So what does this policy apply to? The short answer is all streets and public right-of-way projects will be subject to this policy. I'll note that the policy presented in front of you does establish several exceptions, for instances where integrating complete streets is not appropriate for a particular project. With that in mind, the city will take a context-sensitive approach to understand current and expected land use and transportation needs of the community and the given availability and funding. So several key implementation steps that I'll touch on included in this policy. The policy identifies directions that, for the city to begin formally implementing complete streets into their decision-making. Complete streets implementation will require ongoing collaboration and coordination amongst the various stakeholders, which many of your divisions are already doing. Implementation includes integrating the complete streets principles and designs into all city plans, policies, manuals, ordinances, and programs. The policy, along with an internal checklist that was established, will develop a process for incorporating complete streets into projects and will help ensure that complete streets are implemented where practical. This will also promote collaboration between divisions such as planning, traffic, CIP, land development, and fire. Lastly, it establishes a mechanism for ongoing monitoring and evaluation of complete streets implementation that allows the city to regularly assess and track progress for meeting these goals and adjusting as necessary. And lastly, this policy will help inform and guide the circulation element, which will be included in the upcoming general plan update. As part of the general plan, the city will assess its existing infrastructure, land use, and community needs. The general plan will include developing standards and guidelines for roadways that reflect complete streets principles. These standards should detail how streets should be designed to accommodate all modes of transportation and include specific requirements for sidewalks, bike lanes, crosswalks, and other complete streets elements. I'll note the image on the right-hand side, an example from Rancho Cucamonga's recent general plan update that we helped create. Complete streets principles are being reflected in these two examples that are presented on your screen. We're looking at a typical cross-section, and you'll note that there's, you know, a wide sidewalk, a designated lane for a bike lane, a more narrow travel lane, which promotes a reduced vehicle speed, pedestrian-scale lighting, and street trees. So these are some complete streets treatments that can be incorporated in your upcoming general plan update. I'll also note that there will be examples of treatments that can be implemented when there's a small right-of-way versus large right-of-way. So these considerations can really be implemented at various locations. So these considerations can really be implemented at various locations within the city. I'll just close by saying, other ways complete streets policy will be incorporated into the general plan are that the general plan will likely lead to an updated land use and zoning regulations that will encourage mixed land use and promote more walkable communities, or focused on creating housing that promotes shorter trips within the city. It will also create a phased implementation plan for complete streets projects, identifying funding sources, partners, and a prioritization criteria. So many exciting things to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just wanted to conclude the presentation, that we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, staff? Okay, are there any public speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one public speaker, Gary Yadi.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Upon reading through the policy and having an opportunity to give input at Public Safety Commission, Bike Temecula Valley is very thankful that Assistant Manager Watson and staff have gone beyond the requirements of Assembly Bill AB thirteen fifty-eight, integrating suggestions from the Community Planning Commission and Traffic Safety Commission to make Temecula's complete streets policy something that can greatly improve street safety, accessibility, active transportation, and ultimately, the quality of life in Temecula. This policy was presented, as presented, will give staff the ability to give our streets back to people. Bike Temecula Valley would like to highlight one aspect of the community involvement process that we believe is significant to achieving the complete street standards the Temecula way. During the QLMP process, the Blue Ribbon Committee, representing a diverse group of stakeholders, inserted the bicycle-friendly community criteria as established by the League of American Cyclists into the thirty-year plan. Since Temecula is currently a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community and striving to become a higher level, having the criteria embedded in our policy and in our general plan is a great way to achieve the benchmarks necessary to build a model active transportation network. Now, what seems to be a very simple policy is actually a major responsibility. BTB implores you to keep your standards high as we implement complete streets. Second only to firearm mishaps, auto and pedestrian slash cyclist incidents are the leading cause of death in children from one to seventeen. Please consider how auto crashes, pedestrian, and bicycle collisions have impacted you and your families. Back in nineteen ninety-two, here in Temecula, there was an auto incident near TVHS involving a Border Patrol chase. That day, we lost four students and a parent, two who were simply walking to school. One, a sixteen-year-old girl, was a former student of mine. In nineteen eighty-one, in another town, I lost my ten-year-old niece to a car versus pedestrian crash. About ten years ago, my wife and her teaching partner lost a five-year-old student to a bike versus auto crash near Ronald Reagan Sports Park. And just this year, our family lost a dear friend in a pedestrian versus auto collision here in Temecula. These are just a few stories that closely affect me. I'm sure we all have stories of auto incident tragedies, and with the first responders in this room, I'm certain they are abundant. I leave you with this, as we now have this policy to implement, when it comes to autos, speed kills, paint does not protect, please continue to reduce speed limits, build streets that discourage high speeds, and protect cyclists and pedestrians so that all ages and abilities can ride, roll, or walk safely without fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, any more speakers? Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and open it up to the council for any comments or a motion to approve item sixteen.
I thought you had something.
Nope.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, let us vote.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalfis?
Yes.
Mayor Rep. Tim Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Schwenk?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right, wonderful, I'm excited to see that policy pass, so thank you for all the hard work on that, thank you. Okay, we are now at item seventeen, which is actually quite an interesting follow-up to our complete streets policy, is receive update regarding the Nicholas Road multi-use trail extension. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm Ron Moreno, Assistant Director of Public Works. I'm here to talk about the Nicholas Road multi-use trail extension update. So, Somers Bend Development was conditioned to extend Nicholas Road as part of their conditions of approval, all the way from Butterfield Stage Road to Caya Garisol. And the Road Power Ranch specific plan originally approved and amended the, through subsequent amendments, the trail conditions, not only the cross-section, but it also set standards for the actual roadway width. The Nicholas Road multi-use trail was included as part of these improvements that are going to be constructed, and that is what we are going to be talking about this evening. So if you look at the two graphics, what we have are two separate graphics that were part of the original specific plan. And originally, it contemplated DG trail at various locations along the segments. And if you notice that it shows two different types, one was going to be ten feet, one was going to be larger, it showed rail, it showed parkway improvements that could not be constructed, but that is what was originally adopted in the specific plan many, many years ago that started out in two thousand and two. However, subsequent to that, there, we also had a bikeway master plan that was put together to look at the corridor in its entirety and see how this could be integrated in. In that bikeway master plan, it showed two different trails. It showed an asphalt trail on the north, and then it showed a DG trail on the south for equestrian use or other types of uses. It kind of matches what's out there, if you ever have ever driven the corridor out in front of the Edison substation, and along that street, there is a DG trail. And then also, we know that the Park and Ride that was built by Somers Bend Development is, also has a DG trail on the north side. So the recommendations in the master plan were intended to close the gaps that were happening throughout the city and close the loop, so to speak. And as part of the development, though, it's the developer that is completing the construction of the improvements along Nicholas Road. Now, having those two conflicting elements, we took this issue to the Open Space Trails Ad Hoc Subcommittee, met with, and they met with us to discuss not only the construction plans that were already, have been designed and are currently under construction, but then also to address concerns regarding how this corridor would function as a trail system, and then also access concerns as well. So, solutions that were discussed by the Subcommittee were, as such, were, ended up having to be implemented quite quickly. So after talking with the Subcommittee, we met with the developer, certain driveways underwent a redesign, as recently as last week, and so what we did is changed over those driveways from residential driveways into commercial driveways to give more of a turning radius for equestrian vehicles. But we also looked at starting a study of stop warrant analysis, to see where along the corridor there would need to be some stops in order to kind of slow down speeds, because it is going to be quite a thoroughfare. And so we're going to be looking at that as well, but then also, further analysis will look at crossings for equestrian. So I know that you all are familiar with some of the ones we have in Los Ranchitos, we'd be looking at some crossings where equestrians could be, it could be at the Park and Ride or other places along the corridor, but we're going to be doing a further analysis to look at all those areas. And we also discussed during the Subcommittee how the master plan calls for the DG trail on the south side, and that south side trail would be constructed by the city at a later date or a condition of development for some, some other party. So based on all the feedback from the Subcommittee, that was received from the Subcommittee, staff recommends that the city council tonight affirm the plans for the construction of Nicholas Road as they are today, with a ten-foot asphalt paved trail on the north side, as shown in the multi-use trails and bikeways master plan. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, are there any questions, staff? No? Okay, any comments, or I'll certainly entertain a motion to approve this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public comment, Gary Yadi, and that's our only comment.
Okay, sorry about that, getting ahead of myself. It's almost like it's the end of the year or something.
Sorry about that, at least I'm speaking before midnight tonight. So it's great to be back, and Bike Temecula Valley is just so excited to see that Nicholas Extension of the Santa Gertrudas Trail taking shape. We are advocates for safe cycling, rolling, and walking for all ages and abilities, including mobility chairs for those with disabilities. Ultimately, building infrastructure like the Santa Gertrudas Trail, the Nicholas Extension, facilities that are completely separated from autos is the best way to make cyclists, pedestrians be safe and feel safe. And Exhibit C, Exhibit C recommends to connect our trails and encourage more residents to bike and walk rather than drive. We believe the Nicholas Extension project will motivate more of us to bike and walk. There is plenty of data to show that when cyclists and pedestrians feel safe, they will bike and walk more. This should be our goal from this day forward, to build and connect more facilities like the Santa Gertrudas Trail, the I-15 undercrossing, the Great Oak Trail, the Old Town Creek Walk, and Diaz Road segments of the Marietta Creek Regional Trail, and now, the Nicholas Road Extension. When the extension is completed, you can dust off your old bicycle, or rent one from small local business, have breakfast in Old Town, jump on Old Town Creek Walk Trail segment, and bike almost completely car-free to wine country via the Long Valley Wash Trail in Somers Bend. In the big picture, this extension almost completes the western and northern segments of the Temecula Loop Trail. This is a highly significant project for active transportation in Temecula. Since we are a sprawling community, it is difficult to walk or bike to services, schools, and work. This trail segment will give folks in the northern neighborhoods the opportunity to choose to walk, run, roll, or bike on safe infrastructure. It will most definitely provide encouragement for Temeculans to move naturally, and will help us remove car trips from the circulation grid. BTV is looking forward to more of the same as Temecula continues to lead the way in our region for promoting active transportation and an active lifestyle, an active and safe and happy lifestyle. Thanks again.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve and affirm the Subcommittee's recommendation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, let us vote.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalfis?
Yes.
Mayor Rep. Tim Stewart?
Yes.
And Mayor Schwenk?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much for that. All right, we'll move on to items for future city council agendas, anything for my colleagues? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to city manager's report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City attorney report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in closed session tonight, the council voted five to zero to approve a settlement agreement with Argonaut Insurance, Surety Insurance Company, the surety for the Park and Ride project, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, which is for the benefit of the city. No other action to report from closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. And as we move to adjournment tonight, if we could please put up the slide. We received word this week that the city and our community lost a dear friend to cancer. Lynn Fanini worked with Riverside Sheriff's Office from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and nine when she retired. Prior to RSO service, Lynn served in the Navy for over twenty-one years. Lynn was assigned, and he might actually be the first community services officer, too, that was assigned to and served the city of Temecula. We just want to take a moment to adjourn in Lynn's memory and let his family know that we are here if they need anything from the city of Temecula. All right, we're adjourned.